Call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of October 4th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Now, I'm aware of one change, and that is under the timetable agenda. The 5:40 item will be moving from this meeting to the 10:18 meeting. Are there any other changes beside that one? There are no other changes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the order of business with the change that I mentioned.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there, under tab four, is the 2011 Annual Appropriations Ordinance. This would be the second reading of that ordinance. It's ordinance number 1390. And first, we'll invite anyone from the public that wishes to comment regarding this ordinance may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on the budget?
I don't know if this is the right time I need to come up here, but I'm Bernie Marsh on the Esquire Club downtown. And last week, you guys voted to raise the liquor fees, which I'm totally comfortable with that. You know, I don't know if many of the liquor owners knew that that was coming up, and I don't know if they should have been knowing about it or not. I don't have a problem paying the fair share that should be paid, but 40 percent is quite an increase on anybody's budget, but that's fine. What I would have a question, though, is if some of this money could be used to help fund the cab service, so we can have cabs run at a later time. Because right now, during the week, they close at 10 o'clock, and sometimes even if you call before 10, you get the recording. And with all the new people in town, I think a cab service is very important.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marsh. I don't recall the number right offhand, but we do have a fairly significant subsidy in the budget for the cab service already. I'm thinking it's $50,000. Does that sound right?
Fifty-two-five, I think. It was $50,000 last year.
And what is it this year?
I think it's fifty-two-five this year.
Fifty-two-five?
Okay, well, that's fine. It just, the way the city's growing, I think the taxi is a very important thing that we need to have running later hours. I know they start at 6:45 in the morning, but they've got time slots that are taken, so even if you need a cab at that time, you can't get one unless you've already had or into their schedule.
What about Friday and Saturday nights?
They're open until 1:30 on Friday nights and Saturday nights. Sometimes it could be a little later, but I guess that's not too bad. But during the week at 10 o'clock, myself, for my business, we give a lot of people rides home, and the more people that are in town, we're doing it more often. And they always say, "Well, if you want us to run later, you need to help subsidize us." Well, here, I'm hoping that maybe some of this money can go to, into their direction.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments.
One question.
Yep.
Mr. Marsh, you know, I think we've all recognized the value in the taxi service, and I think it's been enhanced the last couple of years. But have you talked to Colleen Radikowski about the hours and talked to the elderly people?
My daughters visited with somebody with the tax cab service. I couldn't, I wouldn't know where the discussion went, though. Because, you know, we used to, at one time, we used to have the little vouchers that we gave the taxi company X amount of dollars. We got so many vouchers, and it was like a free ride home, and I'd still throw money in for the taxi driver anyway. But these people are not interested in working that route, but it would still be nice if they could be open later.
I wonder if you guys shouldn't just sit and talk with her and see what the possibilities are. See what they can do with the hours. I know they're getting more stabilized with the whole operation of the transportation.
I can do that. I just thought this was budget time, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment regarding the budget? All right, if there's no one else, any comments by city commissioners or city staff?
Mr. President, I'll move for the approval of the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1390, the annual appropriations ordinance.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Mr. Kessel or Mrs. Johnson, would either one of you wish to comment? I think there's only one change in this from what was presented two weeks ago.
The, I'll make mention of that change, Mayor Johnson. The first, well, actually, there's two. The first would be, we've chosen to reflect the grant we anticipate to receive from the DOT. We've shown the income and then the offsetting expense for that grant. And then the other thing is, we have included the $40,000 use of cash to employ the government affairs specialists that we spoke about at the last meeting. So those are the only two changes from the last, first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Mrs. Johnson, anything you want to add about the budget? Okay. Any discussion? Would there be a motion? Well, we have the motion. Are you ready to vote? Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Yes.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to item B. And this is a proclamation. It's regarding White Cane Safety Day. Mr. Kessel, unless you have some comments, I'll read the proclamation. Okay. It says, "Whereas the white cane serves as a symbol that identifies individuals with sight loss and also serves as our primary aid, which allows the freedom of independent travel, and whereas the white cane or a dog guide allows persons who are blind and/or have sight loss to move freely and safely from place to place and thus fully participate in our society, and whereas North Dakota traffic statutes also require drivers of motor vehicles to yield the right-of-way to individuals utilizing a visible white cane or a dog guide, and whereas the City of Dickinson and the State of North Dakota, through its public offices and with the cooperative assistance of the North Dakota Association of the Blind and the American Council of the Blind, shall endeavor to ensure greater safety for persons with vision loss by efforts to educate the general public of these traffic laws. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis W. Johnson, President of the City of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2010, as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, and call upon our government offices, city officials, and citizens of Dickinson to abide by North Dakota White Cane laws." So I'm happy to make that proclamation and sign this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
What's the source of this request?
Do you remember Rita? Can't remember if it was the North Dakota Association of the Blind or not.
Okay.
We get a number of these that either come in by mail or email. But this is certainly good for the public to be aware of anyone crossing through the, crossing the street really has the right-of-way. And traffic should stop for them whether you have a white cane or not. We'll move to item C, city attorney agreement. And Mr. Kessel, can you take us through that?
Certainly. President Johnson, commissioners, the city attorney agreement was up this year. We talked after negotiations with Ebeltoff-Sickler and their desire to restructure that agreement somewhat. We are moving away from what a traditional retainer agreement would be. Normally, the current agreement sets a dollar amount per month, and then we use, we use the city attorney as best we can. We do have the provision to bill separately for items that aren't covered under the retainer. The new agreement recognizes that, moving forward, we're going to do a different system. There'll be two different rates of pay. The first will be to attend meetings and, like the city commission meeting, like our leadership and executive team meetings, planning and zoning, things such as that, what I call the proactive side. Those will be billed at a lower rate, and then the items that might come from either those meetings or other city work, a work product is created, will be billed at a second rate. This will result, or likely will result, in a slightly higher fee at the end of the year, when all is said and done. But it is something that will allow the city staff to manage a little better. Right now, the fee is monthly regardless of whether we use the attorney or not. This will allow us more flexibility in the amount incurred because it will be, it will be done by request. But we do anticipate a slightly higher fee, and it is, it has been budgeted and in the budget you just passed. So with that, I'll try to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Questions or comments by commissioners?
Mr. President, I thought it was a good agreement, a fair agreement. I think Mr. Coling does an excellent job for us, and I think we need to recognize these are busy times in our city. And I think it's reflected with city staff, with others involved with the city, and it's like a good agreement to me.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else? Okay. So we would need a motion to approve this agreement. Is there such a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? No discussion? We'll vote then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I think we'll move to the timetable agenda. We have a 5:30 item, and that's a public hearing regarding an application for an oil well. Before I declare the public hearing open, we'll ask Mr. Soren to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson, city commissioners. We did receive a, an application to drill an oil well from a Hellick operating. The location of their proposed well site is west of town, approximately half a mile. It's, they'd be using the road that accesses the county shop to get to the location. It's about a half a mile north of the county shop, west of that section line there. We did have an energy committee meeting regarding their proposed well location, and there was just a couple of questions or concerns that they brought up at that meeting. One of them being, if it's a producing well, they would like to see the fenced and the screening requirement similar to what we have on the truck route southeast of town. And the other one was, through the process of drilling the well, they have these reserve pits to catch the material from the well. And I believe typically, they use a 12-mill thickness liner, and they had requested a 16-mill be required because of the proximity to the town and how they reclaim those and bury them on-site. They thought it would be better if we had that thicker liner in place. So with that, they are recommending that we approve the, the application to drill with those two stipulations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. At this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wishes to comment regarding this issue may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anyone from the public? We do have someone from the public.
I believe you gentlemen approved the drilling. Is that right?
That's correct. Now, we know who you are, but since you're on Channel 19, you have to tell your name.
Yeah, and I'm probably, you're probably sorry that you do.
Yeah.
All I wanted to say was that, you gentlemen, and it hurts me to say this, have done a very nice job for this city, despite the fact that you're Republicans, most of you.
You still have to tell us your name, even though you're a Democrat.
My name is Bob Walton. I really didn't want it known that that, because of the fact that I'm complimenting Republicans. But I have to leave and thank you. You take good care of this gentleman, will you?
Okay, I will.
Did you spell his name right, Lisa?
Sir?
I wanted to make sure that the press spelled your name right.
I just assumed you didn't.
Anybody else wish to comment on our political affiliation here? If not, then we'll declare the public hearing regarding the oil well closed, and I'll invite comments from city commissioners or city staff.
Mr. Soren, are the surface owners considered to be the mineral owners also?
I can't answer that again. I didn't research the mineral owners on it. We ensured that the surface owners, because they're the ones that are directly impacted by the visual, that we know who they are so we can contact them about the public hearing. But as far as the minerals, we haven't researched who actually owns those.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I think the request of the board is well advised, and I would pose that we approve the application for the well.
Okay. I have a question. Mr. Soren, when the motion to approve the application is, does that mean that the fencing requirement and the 16-mill liner requirement is actually in there, or does our motion have to specifically state that?
I think the motion should specifically state that because that's a special condition attached to the application.
Okay, so, and what type of fence was that again?
It was a six-foot chain link fence with screening slats in it, is what they recommended, with the 16-mill liner in the reserve pit.
I would amend my motion to include that.
Okay, so Mr. Steiner's motion includes, his motion to approve includes those two items. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion, though? There's no discussion. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Now, we'll go back to the non timetable agenda, and that's item D, and that's a report on the liquor license ordinance. And Mr. Coling, are you going to give that report?
Yes, Mr. President. In your packets, you'll see a proposed ordinance regarding liquor licenses. This is a compilation of a number of matters that have been on your discussion schedule for the past number of months. This proposed ordinance does four things in basic. It provides for the potential addition of one more on-off sale liquor license by a bid process. Consistent with current city ordinances, one on-off sale license could be added every time the city's population increases by an estimated 3,000 people. Secondly, the ordinance provides for the addition of a caterer's license. You'll recall, this is something that was proposed and discussed at your last meeting, and this ordinance incorporates that caterer's license into our existing license scheme. Thirdly, this proposed ordinance provides that the annual fees for liquor licenses of all classes will be set by resolution of the city commission and incorporated into the city's fee schedule. Previously, those license fees have been determined by ordinance. If you do pass this resolution, you would set those annually, just as you set other fees that the city assesses. And finally, this proposed ordinance provides for an issuance fee and transfer fee, so anytime an on-off sale license was transferred, there would be a fee associated with that. Also, anytime another business requested a liquor license of some other class, there would be an issuance fee that would be assessed as well.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Coling. I'd invite comments or questions from commissioners, feedback to Mr. Coling.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
I, I'm fine with the ordinance as written. I have one question. I'm a little bit confused with the caterer's license. Licensee may operate a cash bar. What about a hosted bar? Does that not need a license?
A hosted bar...
In other words, if the party hiring the caterer actually hosts the bar that the caterer is facilitating?
That would not fall under, under this license for a caterer. That would, at least as this is drafted, would require a special event permit and someone with an existing license to provide alcohol service at that event.
Why wouldn't we just include that? I expect there'd be a lot of situations like that.
You may wish to do so. That's, I guess, the way that the ordinance was, was drafted, and, but I would have no issue if the commission would want to include a hosted bar within the caterer's license as well.
That just kind of stuck out at me when I read this.
Commissioner Jackson, can I ask a follow-up question, just so I understand? When you, when you say hosted bar, is there an exchange of funds between whomever is approaching the bar and, and the bar itself?
No.
So there's no, and if there's not an entry, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Coling, if there's not an exchange of funds and there's not an entrance fee to get into that event, whatever that may be, we don't license those types of things. We don't issue even special event liquor license in those situations. So if, so there's no need for a license or a permit to do the kinds of things that I believe you're discussing.
But this is still a business entity providing a bar, providing liquor sales for someone. I, you know, I guess if it's not needed, that's fine.
I think Mr. Jackson has a point. I don't see a lot of difference between if one party, you know, provides the cost for the bar. If, if Mr. Jackson is hosting a party through this caterer, or through a caterer and says, "Look, I don't want it to be a cash bar. I'll just pay for the entire thing myself," versus if I hosted a party, it would definitely be a cash bar, you know?
We already know that.
Yeah, we already, I'm just, that's redundant. I, I, as long as it's going through a caterer, I don't see, myself, I don't see a difference. I think, I think the ordinance should say either cash or hosted bar, or some other word that means applies to both of them.
Mr. President, I would agree with that also. At the end of the night, someone's going to get a tab for the liquor that was presented.
How does this ordinance work in Lady J's request? You know, I'm looking at line one where they're not permitted to provide on-sale alcohol at the site owned, and that is what Lady J's currently does. So although we're creating this catering license because of their request, it seems to preclude them from having the catering license. How does that work?
I think the situation with Lady J's, I have some questions about how exactly this would impact their business as well. One of the difficulties in creating a caterer's license is trying to distinguish a caterer from an ordinary restaurant. And the way that this proposed ordinance does so is to say that a caterer is providing alcohol sales off premises, essentially, outside the ordinary business location of the business. If you don't have that distinction between a caterer and an ordinary restaurant, it's very, very difficult to impose standards on which an ordinary business that sells alcohol cannot just simply qualify under a caterer's license and pay the lower fee for a caterer's license. I believe as, as this ordinance is drafted, it will permit Lady J's or whomever to cater events and provide alcohol service at catered events outside their business premises without having to pay the fee for a special event permit all the time, but it would not permit them to sell alcohol on their restaurant premises unless they also had a restaurant license.
I think we have a hole there, because in the case of that business, just they happen to have a, a site that they can cater to, it's just their own site, and, and that's, that's their current practice. I understand your concern. You have to guard against the other situation, but can this be, you think this could be written in such a way that would accommodate a business such as Lady J's?
I played around with, with language that would try to do that, and I haven't found a solution to it that would allow a business such as Lady J's to qualify under a caterer's license, but that would not allow a business such as Applebee's or another restaurant to also qualify under a caterer's license. It's, the statutory language becomes very, very difficult to try to distinguish between those two.
So now Lady J's, if they want to continue offering alcohol on-site for their on-site things, they'd have to have two licenses, a catering license and a restaurant license?
Correct.
So we, we just doubled what they needed when they came and asked us for a solution?
This proposed ordinance is modeled after the one that Bismarck currently uses, so this is the same system, as I understand it, that Lady J's is operating in under, under their business in Bismarck. I think, you know, if the commission does want to go forward with this, I think we do need to sit down with Lady J's and have a conversation with them about how they are operating their business and how they would, would fall under the statutory scheme. But I do think that the difficulty is going to be to figure out how we can distinguish in statutory terms between a catering business and an ordinary restaurant.
Well, you just got a new contract. You should be able to figure this out now.
Not effective until January 1st, though.
Oh, that's true. Okay. Good point. I had a question also. This is just a minor detail, but the, right before the military club beer and wine section, and this is in the restaurant on-sale license section, but it says, "The Board of, it says, 'Board of City Commissioners may, in its discretion, require certification of any statement,' meaning that's a financial statement, 'by an accountant licensed by the State of North Dakota retained by the licensee.'" Back in the caterer section, you just say certified public accountant, and, and I think that's what I would want this to be, very clear, that this would be by a certified public accountant if we required it. Now, maybe you're saying the same thing when it says licensed by the State of North Dakota, but, but, you know, the CPA designation means, you know, has a, an understood meaning to it. And I would think we should be consistent throughout the ordinance. If, if we use the phrase certified public accountant in one section, I think we should use it in the other, or we should use the language here in this section, back in the cater license section. Any other comments here? I think the commission would like to accommodate a caterer such as Lady J's that has... I think the commission would like to accommodate a caterer such as Lady J's that has their own facility that they can host an event in without the intention of serving alcohol other than for contracted events. You know, it's just not open to the public to come in and sit down at the bar. Maybe there's not an easy way to do that.
Well, I'm thinking about other caterers in town and if they were to purchase a building and cater special events that building. I could interpret this ordinance as written, you know, to be fine. But I think Lady J's is operating a restaurant. Last I knew, they are operating a restaurant also. So if they're operating a restaurant and they want to serve alcohol, it'd seem they'd have to have that license.
If they serve alcohol with their noon lunches, absolutely. That's not an event. But that's not their practice right now. And I don't think they intend to do that. Maybe there's no way around that, too. You know, I think you have some time to think that over a little more. We're... This doesn't... I think Mr. Jackson's right. This doesn't accomplish, you know, what we thought we'd be able to do at the last meeting. Now, I think it's good to have a caterer section in here because not every caterer's going to have a space that they can hold an event in. She'd be better off somebody else owning her building.
Mr. President, if I may, one of the other problems that I think we'd encounter if we allowed a caterer to cater on their own premises and allow alcohol sales at certain times and not at other times is we may run into somewhat of an enforcement problem. We're going to depend upon our police department to enforce this ordinance, and making them aware of when alcohol sales are permitted on the premises and when they are not could become somewhat difficult to do. Part of the special event permit, when entities are catering events outside their normal premises, is that they have to define the area in which alcohol sales will be permitted and provide security for those events and provide for the means by which minors will not have access to alcohol. If Lady J's or another caterer was offering alcohol sales on their own premises without an ordinary restaurant license, I'm not sure that we would have those same protections.
Well, Mr. Jackson, you'd better sit down and talk with them.
President Johnson, commission... I'm wondering if there's another way to skin the cat, so to speak. You know, the concern that I heard her state when she was here is dollars. It was simply a restaurant license that she's required to get today is expensive compared to how many times she actually uses it, and she still has to pay the $25, soon-to-be $30 special event license. You know, maybe there's a way to issue a certain amount of special event licenses with a restaurant license. In other words, you still go through the process, you simply don't pay the fee, and you're granted a certain amount of those per year to lower than your expenses. There may be other ways of going about trying to achieve what she would like to achieve and what you would like to achieve. So we can probably bring a different draft to you if you'd like. The important... The other remaining articles is good to be completed before the new year begins. So we have some time, I believe, to get this done.
Well, we would like to have enough time to hold first reading and then at least one or two public hearings between first reading and second reading. So I'm thinking, you know, it'd be good in two weeks from now if we could put this on for first reading. It doesn't have to be perfect, and it may... That's what the reading process and the hearing process is all about. It may change some between first and second reading. But I think... I'm thinking it's time to move forward on this. That would give you two weeks to, you know, if you come up with a different idea, to present in the first reading draft. As long as the reaction from the commission to the other sections here is that, you know, they're satisfied with this and we can go forward with that first reading. What do you think?
I would agree.
Only part I'm still dissatisfied is not cleaning up the language of our one straggling license that we have out there. And if we're going to put the finishing touches on this, I'd like to see all the finishing touches so that we don't have to come back and revisit it at a later date.
At the prior meeting, I think the general feeling was that there were four of us that kind of liked it this way, and you liked it the other way. Has anybody here changed your mind? You know, then I would suggest, you know, in first reading, it stay in this format, and then you can argue very eloquently...
All right.
...to get us to change our minds as we go along.
That sounds good.
That sounds... Which I know you're capable of doing, so... But if there's no objection, then we would put this on the agenda for first reading at the October 18th meeting. And at that time, we'd start inviting public comment again, plus we would hold at least one, if not two, hearings. That would be just totally dedicated to public comment. Okay. Is there any other feedback that you want to give to Mr. Coleen on this? All right. I'm going to move on then to... Back to the timetable agenda, and we have a 5:50 item there. It is regarding a refinancing issue with the West River Community Center bond. And we're going to ask Mr. Coleen to introduce our guests and introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, I'll introduce to you Mr. Mike Manstrom. Mr. Manstrom is with Doherty and Company out of Bismarck. He has worked with us on the refinancing of the bonds for the West River Community Center. There was a draft resolution in your packets on the binders earlier, and I believe as Benstock passed out a new copy of that resolution, which Mr. Manstrom will walk through with you. The new copy was necessitated as today is the day that interest rates and other matters in the bond were finalized. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Manstrom.
President Johnson, commissioners, thank you. What we did this morning is price the bond issue for the City Dickinson. It's the refinancing of the original 2002 $8 million community center bond issue. There are two remaining years. There was $1,955,000 remaining to be paid, four maturities which were refinanced. I can tell you now, the extending... The existing interest rates on the old bonds, 440 and 450, have been refinanced with today's action, down first years of three-quarters of 1%, of 1%, 1.1% and 1.15%. Those savings refinancing constitute $46,343 to the city's sales tax fund. We have made no changes in the sales tax issue whatsoever. The maturities remain the same, the payment dates remain the same. The city will make their normal December 1st payment and then begin to accrue savings with the June 1st of 11, the December 1st of 11, the June 1st of 12, and the 12-12 payment which will pay off the bonds. So really, all we're doing is a net savings of $46,000 refinancing at a lower interest rate. Earlier, I handed out an official statement for you guys to take home with you. It talks about the city. This is the document that we prepared to market the bonds to find interest in selling the bonds at the lower interest rate. Talks about the city, talks about fiscal management in the city, which if you read your S&amp;P report, which we also completed for you, this bond issue is now rated A, rated A-stable, S&amp;P standard and pores. And I can tell you, there are no double A sales tax funds in the state of North Dakota. Williston is an A-stable. Fargo has an A-plus, one notch above. That's a 30-year established sales tax fund as well. But A-stable is a very good rating for the city of Williston. Most of that's based on, of course, sales tax collection history. You've basically doubled in the last 10 years. That's only going to get better, as we all understand. And that's why we're getting the low interest rates we're getting. When we went to the market to price these bonds and get them sold for you, we had strong local participation from your local banks. They like to buy short-term money, and no matter how low these interest rates are, they're still better than buying treasuries for their investment portfolios. So it worked very well for everyone. Resolution tonight is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the $1,990,000. That will pay all of your costs of issuance, and that will pay the... And that money will then be transferred to the trustee at the Bank of North Dakota to pay off the old bonds on December 1st, 2010. I've gone through that, over that with Sean and with Tina as well, so they understand the flow of the money. October 15th, the bond issue will close. The money will go to the Bank of North Dakota. The trustee will invest it for a short-term period, the time's got 45 days till it's due, but you have to give 30 days notice to call the bond. So that's the flow of the money. It'll be parked there. It'll pay off the old bonds on December 1st. And the resolution is just... The only change is that we filled in the interest rates for you so that you've got a completed resolution. If you pass the resolution this evening, we lock up the interest rates, we have a deal. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manstrom. Are there any comments or questions? Well, it's good news to know that we have an A-rating.
Absolutely.
And this is resolution number what?
Mr. President, be 1390.
1390. Okay. Would there be a motion then regarding this resolution?
I would make motion to approve resolution 1390.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing nonwill vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
On behalf of Doherty and Company, thank you for the opportunity to work for the city again. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your work. We appreciate the $46,000 savings.
It'll go in the fund and be well-used.
I'm sure will. Okay. I think we're close enough to 6 o'clock. We have a 6 o'clock timetable item. It's a final plat regarding the Lyons subdivision, and we'll ask Mr. Soren to introduce that item.
Thank you, President Johnson. We do have in front of you the final plat of the Lyons subdivision. This one was in front of you several months ago when the issue of annexation was brought up and has kind of been on hold until just recently, since we've established the proposed annexation boundaries and them agreeing to be a part of that. They've asked to proceed with the approval of the final plat at this point contingent upon the completion of the annexation. This subdivision is northeast of town. It is an 18-lot proposed subdivision. It is currently zoned ag. And if the plat is approved, the rezoning of this would take it from an agricultural zone to an R1 zoning. Planning and zoning has looked at this several times and is recommending approval of the plat to the city commission.
Thank you, Mr. Soren. You've heard Mr. Soren's report. Are there any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I will move that the final plat of the Lyons subdivision be approved contingent on proper annexation and contingent on a development agreement that it will include financial or other legal guarantee that water, sewer, and street infrastructure will be constructed.
You have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Discussion.
Yes. Mr. President, Mr. Jackson, has that street issue been solved then as far as the standard that we wanted leading in from, I imagine, what, 26th or 34th, excuse me? We were talking about, or some of the discussion we had before dealt with the width of the street, the surface scene and et cetera. Was that discussed and taken care of?
Mr. Soren, can you address that?
I'm assuming you're referring to the street to the north of this subdivision?
No, I'm talking about the one on the west side. There was some discussion we had when this first came into play that we wanted to make sure that that street provided for adequate access to that subdivision.
On...
It'd be the western edge there. Next to where it says unplatted. Is there not a street that goes down that?
There's an access easement that's on the west side. The access to this subdivision will come from 34th Street through the Northview Acres subdivision. We are working with the county on a resolve to that street to get to this subdivision from the north. To the west, there is a street that goes into the North Industrial Park that we're working with that developer as well on the development of that infrastructure.
So we're basically talking about an easement and on the west side there.
That's shown on here is an access easement along the west boundary of this property, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. We have the motion and the second, and then we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Now, did we have a resolution number on... Is this a resolution or was it...
It is a resolution, Mr. President, be 1391.
1391.
That's ordinance numbers, excuse me. It should be resolution 35-2010, is that correct?
I'm sorry. You're correct. 35-2010.
And so then the... That refinancing resolution for the bond issue wasn't 1390, and then it was 34?
34-2010.
34-2010. Okay. We'll have our clerk make that change. Now, we have a rezoning petition, and Mr. Soren, would you introduce that item then?
Yes. This is for the Lyons subdivision, which, as I had mentioned, is currently zoned agricultural. Through the plating process and the development of this, the request was to change that from an agricultural to an R1 single-family development, and that's what we're recommending we approve this as.
Just as a matter of clarification, going back to the plat action, you know, Mr. Jackson's motion was quite specific. It wasn't simply just to approve the resolution as written, and I just want to make sure that our clerk has his motion. You do? All right. Great. Okay. At this time then, we're going to declare the public hearing open regarding the rezoning petition. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the rezoning of this property may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any comments by other city staff or city commissioners? Not? Is there a motion regarding the first reading of this ordinance? And is this number 1391?
1390.
13... This is... No, I think we... 1390 was the appropriations ordinance.
You're correct, 1391.
1391, okay. So is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move for a... I'll move for approval, the first reading of ordinance 1391.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Fire department report. We're going to go down to public safety, so we'll invite our fire chief, Chief Seabuck, to the podium.
President Johnson, commissioners, recently Governor Hoven, with members of the North Dakota Fire Prevention Association present, signed a proclamation recognizing October 3 to 9th as Fire Prevention Week throughout the state. This year's theme is "Smoke Alarms: A Sound You Can Live With." Nearly 3,000 people die each year in home fires. Two-thirds of those in homes without smoke alarms or without working smoke alarms. We'd like to take this opportunity to make all of our citizens aware of their smoke alarms. Test them. Make sure that they're working. Make sure that the family members know what your smoke alarm sounds like. If your smoke alarm is 10 years old or older, consider replacing it. And would you like me to move on to the second part of our report?
Please.
We bring in front of you again our information on KITF fire props. We're asking for consideration tonight to approve them as a sole-source provider, a sole-source vendor, for the work that we'd like done to one of our live-fire props at our training site. The prop is a, an oil storage tank that currently burns actual product, actual crude oil, or diesel fuel, or something like that. This project would change that prop to use propane, and to simulate the fire created by a fuel oil prop, but by using propane. So tonight, we are to be asking for your approval on that.
Thank you, Chief. You have the information in front of you from KITA Corporation. I think the amount is $85,000, and again, can you tell us how this would be financed?
We asked for a grant, and we actually have a grant of $93,500 from the Energy Development Impact Office to fund this project.
Okay.
And that is a grant that does not require a local match.
Okay. So is there a motion, then, regarding this item?
I'll move to approve the purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Before you leave, are there any questions for Chief Seabuck regarding any fire department issues that you may have? All right.
Thank you, commissioners, and I know you'll lead the charge in testing your smoke alarms this evening. Thank you.
It's always a good idea that you check those smoke alarms at the, when we change time, right? We'll be going from daylight savings time back to standard time here pretty soon, I think.
Yes, sir, that's right, and thank you for reminding me to mention that. Change your clocks, change your battery is a theme that everybody has heard, and it's a good reminder, especially if you're relying on battery-operated smoke detectors. When you change your clocks, if at no other time, change that battery and that smoke alarm. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a 610 timetable agenda item, and this is another final plat, and we'll have Mr. Soren introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. Yes, this is another final plat that's in front of you of Diamond Acres subdivision. This plat has come a long way. It's 104 acres, and I think we've been working on it, it feels like two years or so now, and we've come with the plat that's in front of you. It is a, got several different zoning characteristics to this plat, from general commercial, R1, R2, throughout the layout. It's several lots. I don't know the exact number, but I think it's close to 300, 286, or something like that, lots that will be platted through the development of this subdivision. Planning and zoning has reviewed this plat, as I had said several times, through several different layouts, and we feel we have a very good plat in front of the commission tonight, and would recommend approval of the Diamond Acres subdivision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. Mr. Coling, I'm assuming this resolution is 36-2010, is?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. You've heard Mr. Soren's report and recommendations. Any comments or questions by commissioners here?
Mr. President, I've got a few, if I may.
Yes, you may.
What is that MDU lot on Block 1? What's that entail? On the western edge over there, next to the state, it's the Highway Department?
It's not a substation, I don't believe, but MDU does own it. I do believe they have an electrical box on that facility, and that's why it's left out, because they own that separate from the old plat that was there.
Also, we have about three and a half lots that are not connected to a public street on the same Block 1. The reason for that would be what? Block 1, Lot 1, 2, and 3?
There's a platted street on the east side of those that runs south to 14th.
That street's already been platted, then, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Also, is there a reason that, excuse me, did anybody look at retention ponds in this particular area for drainage problems that they've had?
On the original plat area, they, we have been working with the developer and his engineer on the development. As you may recall, at a previous meeting, we talked about development impact fees to work on three streets, and through the process of that, they've been working on the drainage, storm sewer, tying into a storm sewer line that we have in that area, and they have been dealing with, we have been working on those issues as he's looking to develop that property.
Are we looking at a retention pond? So much the way we have?
Not necessarily a regional one on this facility, on this side. When we get to some of the commercial, we may have some individual development ponds, seeing how that goes. When you look at the unplatted portion, there's a lot, 15, Block 14. The intent of that is certainly to handle stormwater concerns that are generated in that area.
The reason I bring it up is that there's a draining, drainway that goes through there to the west of, at All Seasons Park. Place is notorious for runoff to the south, and we think we can test to that with the developments taking place in that KDIX plat right now, where they've hit a high-water table. And I'm thinking that with an artificial surf, or the amount of artificial surfaces up there, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't behoove us to have some type of retention, because when that rains up there, it comes down to those streets from curb to curb, and I've got neighbors up in that area that I can test to the fact that their basements are flooding, you know, on a continuous basis over the last 30 years because of it. And I'd hate to think that all that artificial surfaces would add more water, you know, southward. I'm just throwing it out there as a caution.
They certainly do add additional water, and certainly, as we look to developments, that's one of the things we look to control, the amount of increased runoff from an area. And I don't know that we're going to lessen the amount, but we're certainly trying to manage how much leaves the development area through the process, whether it's a pond, whether it's, you know, getting it into a storm sewer facility that's already there. That may not be happening at this point. You know, there's several different ways we can manage that, and certainly, we're looking at that on this one, as well as the development that's to the south, and the plats that we're working on with that one, too.
Okay, as long as we're cognizant of that, because there is, like I say, a drainage that goes on the west side there, and even one that comes off a little to the east on that second or third phase that he's proposed, and I'd, I think that is something we just had to draw your attention to. Sure.
Okay, other comments, questions? Okay, this is Resolution 36-2010. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 36-2010.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? I have a question. The previous plat that we approved, Mr. Jackson, you had a couple of specific conditions in your motion. Do you see a need for that here?
No, I don't.
You don't?
Okay. And maybe this is something we need to talk about more. I know staff is trying to develop policy in this regard, but this is a plat with a very different character than what we had with the prior plat. So I don't see the need here.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, we have the motion to approve. We'll proceed to vote, then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next is rezoning petition, and Mr. Soren will let you introduce that item.
The rezoning of this area, currently, I believe, the majority of this land is zoned R1. On the west side, there's some R2, which abuts the Department of Transportation property. Through the development of this and the layout that has been proposed as part of this plat, takes the west side of this and turns it into a general commercial, which abuts the east property line of the Department of Transportation, and the north side of that property is general commercial currently. Then, and that's Block 1, Block 2, and Block 3 being general commercial. Block 4 gets into an R3 on the west side of Block 4, and R2 on the east side of Block 4, which is kind of staggering from the commercial down to the R1. Then, there's a pretty good area of R1 as you move to the east, and then the, it gets past 4th Street over to proposed 5th Street East or so, into the cul-de-sac, or the circle area. There's some R2 being in Block 11, and then along 21st is R2 as well, Blocks 9, Block And then, on the northwest corner, goes back into a general commercial. So it's laid out very well, I think, you know, general commercial, staggering R3, R2, R1, back to an R2, then general commercial. And they, this has been looked at extensively, and planning and zoning is recommending approval of this zoning layout as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. This, too, involves a public hearing, so at this time, we'll declare the public hearing open regarding this rezoning petition. Anyone that would like to comment may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. I'm assuming, Mr. Coling, this is ordinance number 1392?
That's correct.
And so at this time, we'd invite any comments by the City Commission, or a motion regarding first ordinance, or first reading?
Mr. President, I have some more questions regarding the use of a general commercial based on the definition that was provided us, as opposed to a community commercial for that area, where we have a heavy residential makeup, both to the east and to the proposed KDIX area, which is a community commercial. Is there a reason that we are looking at a general as opposed to a community commercial in that area?
Well, and I certainly don't want to speak for the developer, but I think when we looked at this, the property along 21st is general commercial, so the adjoining property to the north, and then the Department of Transportation is a pretty heavy commercial to the west of this property, so it was felt that, I think, the makeup of this fits pretty well in between those two adjacent property owners, and that's why it was established as that.
You believe that the R2 and R3 are sufficient enough buffers for that area?
I think that R3 and then going to the R2, getting over to the R1, yeah, I think it establishes a pretty good buffer between the area there.
Well, according to the definition, it's, this general commercial is most appropriately located along major arterial streets, and in areas that are adequately buffered from residential districts. But I'm thinking that the distance to the radar base road there might be far enough away, but if you're saying that the area, general commercials, that area north there is already general commercial, I suppose it becomes something, I'm a little concerned about the resident, the influence on the residential areas all.
You know, I understand your concern. I would point out that all that land along the north side of that R1 is general commercial. I probably have bigger concerns with that, but that's an existing general commercial area, and is established as such. You know, so with him tying into that, and then, and at least buffering it on the east, the west side of the residential and trying to stagger it down, I think does help improve that buffer area. Of course, the property on the north of 21st there is all general commercial, out to the trailer court.
Is there a motion regarding first reading?
Mr. President, move to approve first reading?
Second.
Ordinance 1392.
We have the motion and the second. Other discussion? Harry Nun will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll move to the 620 timetable agenda item, and Mr. Kessel, we'd have you introduce that item.
Certainly, we have with us today Airport Manager Matt Remensi. He is here to discuss a subsidy request regarding their expansions at the regional airport south of town.
Mayor Johnson, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. At the July meeting, the special subsidy request meeting, I presented a request of $250,000 for a hangar. When that meeting was finished up, I still owed the commission some projections for the hangar use, and also, since that time, the commission, or the, the request has changed due to some funding out at the airport. The request of $250,000 has, as we looked at it, has dropped down to $100,000. The airport is going to get some other funding from another source that we can use to put toward the hangar, and the airport can now put in approximately $225,000 into the hangar, which is total cost of $500,000. And also, with the projections that you guys have received in your packet, I was just wondering if there'd be any questions regarding those. When I came to the meeting in July, I did not have these projections available yet, and there were some concerns with how we were going to pay off a loan if we were not able to get all the money. Based on the projections that I have in this document, the airport in 2011, if the hangar were to be were to be erected, could provide an additional $34,000 in revenue. That is, including the airline in the total revenue. Based on the average fee that we've seen that they pay at other airports, they provide approximately $18,000 for revenue. And then with our projections, we could be looking at approximately $16,000 worth of revenue while incurring expenses of approximately $16,000. And I just want to note that not all the expenses are listed in here. There are certain expenses that Dickinson Air Service would be operating. The hangar would incur, but I'm not 100% certain on what those would be. Those would be items such as hangar keeper's insurance, aircraft, which would cover the movement of aircraft in and outside of hangars. And with it increasing the hangar, or increasing the size of aircraft that he would be moving, there would be an increase in that fee. Another thing that came out of that meeting in July was talking with other entities because this is an economic item. I will be speaking with Billings in Dunn County later this week at their commission meetings, and I'll also be speaking with Stark Development in, I believe, in two weeks at their October board meeting. Commissioner Lambloom, I'm sure next week, when you're at our Airport Authority meeting, I'll have a follow-up to how those meetings went, and I can get that information to the commissioners as well. And just the importance of the hangar, again, is huge. Since we have the overnight aircraft, we've seen approximately, in August, we had an 11% increase, and then in September, we had a 31% increase. And September is the highest month Dickinson has ever seen, in the first month where we've ever been over 1,000 passengers in flight. And that puts us in perfect position to hit our 10,000 this December.
And that's because we can overnight an aircraft, and we have an aircraft then that's here for that first flight out?
Correct.
When we have certain weather conditions, early in the morning, the planes either from Williston or Sidney would fly over us. They couldn't land.
Correct. And that could have happened at least seven to eight times over the month and a half that we've had it. However, we're able to get those passengers on. And in September, I don't think there was a morning where they didn't board at least 20 passengers. So that overnight flight is doing fantastic, and I expected that, because anytime the airport gets an air service, the community hasn't braced it. And it was the same thing with the third flight that we got approximately two years ago.
And we won't, it's likely they wouldn't overnight that aircraft once we get into the winter months.
Correct. They are worried that it may be susceptible to the cold. However, they are going to try it this winter. They're looking at some alternatives, some heaters and wing covers. However, that doesn't, that may not cure the problem, and they may have to pull it up to Sidney or Williston where they have a large hangar and they can't overnight it. It all depends on how it goes this winter. In talking with the airline management, they don't want to pull it out of here. They're very impressed with how well that flight is done, and they don't want to.
The hangar would also be used by other aircraft, according to, I think, the information you provided us.
With a hundred-by-a-hundred hangar, we could get the airlines' aircraft in there overnight. We could also fit additional aircraft in there as well. How many additional aircraft, all depends on the size. But we would be able to get additional aircraft in there as well. It would be used for both general aviation and commercial aviation. And then during the day, if we have, say, a thunderstorm that comes in and somebody wants to hangar their aircraft while they're doing business in town, you know, we can get how many ever aircraft in there that we can, depending on size, again.
Would you discuss shortly, or briefly, the effect that the Air Force proposal would have on any operations out there?
The Powder River MOA is a military operations area, and the U.S. Air Force is proposing to put an MOA on the south side of I-94 from approximately Billings to Carson, Bismarck, North Dakota. This MOA is broken up into four different sections, PR1 through PR4. And Dickinson is on the corridor between PR3 and PR4. They have IFR routes, or instrument flight rule routes. We call them Victor Airways. And our Victor Airway, it goes from Dickinson down to Rapid City, South Dakota. And they have a corridor. That's a separator. On the right side, you have PR4. On the left side, you have PR3. The Air Force has proposed that they use, their times that they have proposed are Monday through Friday, seven in the morning until 11 o'clock at night, and then 4:30 in the evening until 11 o'clock at night. Those are their chartered times. So they don't have to provide any notification within those times to go in there. But the minute they say this MOA is active, if they activate PR3, the one that's to the southwest to Dickinson, if they activate it and we have an aircraft coming from, say, Rock Springs, Wyoming, and it's flying direct from Rock Springs to Dickinson, if they activate that MOA, which they have every right to do, it will now no longer allow IFR traffic to come through there. And a majority of general aviation businesses, such as Wyoming Casing, Basin Electric, MDU, they fly under IFR flight rules. And the minute that MOA goes active, they will now have to go around that MOA instead of being able to fly direct. That's an additional cost to the aircraft owner. And depending on if they have, say, they have PR3 and PR4, they would have to go all the way around to Bismarck. And they may say, well, we didn't plan on going around and just stopping in Bismarck for fuel and say, let's just drive and not use our resources. So I am very concerned with that. I'm also concerned that the 10 days a year that they're going to have large force exercises where they close down the entire MOA, including the Victor Airways, our airline's going to have to go all the way around, not to mention any traffic that needs to get to Dickinson is going to have to go all the way around the MOA. And it can be very burdensome to the pilots and inconvenience to our passengers if they delay flights. If the airline incurs some increases in cost, are those going to be passed on to our passengers?
Is there a timeframe we're dealing with?
Yes. November 15th, public comment is due, and they will have a decision in the summer of 2011. They'd like to charter their airspace in the fall of 2011.
Do they have an alternative to this space?
Yes, they do. Currently, they do have an MOA in north, it'd be northeast Wyoming, southeast Montana, and western part of South Dakota. It's much smaller. It's actually only the size of one of the PR1 through 4 that they're proposing. Their first proposal is all four. They have Alternative B, which would take the westernmost training area and get rid of that. And then they also have Alternative C, which would be the easternmost training area. They would remove that. And if they were to go forward, I would be okay with Alternative C, because it leaves everything from the west side of Dickinson over, it leaves it open. It doesn't affect that airspace at all. However, there is still some concern with our airline still. If they do, if they were ever to continue onto Sidney or Glendale, link us up with another community, they would have to fly through that again.
Getting back to the hangar, just to be very clear, the $100,000, are you requesting a grant or a loan?
Grant.
Grant.
And I'm not sure with you guys approving the budget earlier this meeting.
We didn't put anything in the budget for you.
You didn't put anything in the budget.
But we will next year.
Next year?
Yeah. We can always amend the budget if we agree with you.
Yes, I have a comment. Matt, when you came in in July and you were asking for $250,000, basically, the commission gave you two tasks. We wanted to see how it would cash flow, and we wanted you to check out what other funding services were available for your project. And Rod had suggested Stark County Development, and I got to commend you. You did a very good job of not only cash flowing this out, but now you're coming back asking for $100,000 versus the $250,000. I think it's an important project. You're very close to hitting that magic number that you'll need, that 10,000. And I know that it won't affect you this year as far as storing the hangar, but I would definitely like to see what we could do to move forward with helping with the funding on this.
And to next year, worst-case scenario would be we don't receive any money from the two counties that we're looking at next year, and we have to take out a $75,000 loan. We can still look at energy development monies. You know, I kind of learned a lesson last year when I applied for my monies out at the airport, and I believe we spoke about that at the meeting. We can be able to apply for more money next year, right before we hopefully go up for construction.
Other comments or questions? When do you need action on this item by?
We'd like to have it as soon as possible. Now that we've kind of got the funding and I'm going to the other counties and to start development all within the month, we're going to start looking at design for the hangar when we'd like to go out and bid it. We'd like to be able to bid it by the end of the year so they can start construction early next, early next spring.
If we put this on our agenda for October 18th, would that work for you?
That would be fine.
That'd be fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, if there aren't any objections by our commissioners, we'll place it on the October 18th agenda for action.
All right. That'd be great.
By that time, you'd have met with a couple of the counties out here?
Correct. Yeah, I'd be able to come back and give you guys an update on how the county meetings went and, I don't know, is your meeting, the 19th, sorry, wanted to start County Development.
If we would do this, I assume we're talking about a sales tax source?
Yeah. You know, if it was left to me, I would recommend the hospitality tax. I think this project meets the definition there quite well. Hospitality tax can be used for the purchase, equipping, improving, constructing, maintenance, repair, and acquisition of buildings or property consistent with visitor attraction or promotion. And I, you know, unless Mr. Coleing would shoot me down, I mean, I would say that that works. If you recall from Mrs. Johnson's presentation, financial presentation at the previous meeting, her projection in round numbers is that the hospitality tax will end the year with a $650,000 cash balance. I think the way the 2011 budget is shaping up, we would be adding to that cash balance with the projected revenues and projected or budgeted expenses for 2011. So if you're in favor of this project, that would certainly be a source of funds. I think it also, the 30% of the 1% is also, I think, a possible source. But my first recommendation would be out of the hospitality tax. And you don't really care where it comes from, do you?
No. That's what you guys figure out.
I mean, you care, but...
Yeah.
Mr. Kessel?
Mr. Remensy, when would distribution, do you have any idea when you would like to see these dollars provided to the Airport Authority?
Well, we would like to be able to start construction, you know, as soon as possible next spring. Around the time that construction starts would probably be the...
April, May, June, something like that?
Probably, yeah, summertime, I would say, would be where we'd need the funding.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll put it on our agenda for the 18th, and that'll give management time to also look at possible sourcing options here, and I'm sure they'll have their own recommendation for the commission should the commission vote favorably here for your request.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. See you on the 18th.
See ya. Okay, we have a 6:30 timetable item, and that's a discussion of the northside annexation. So I guess, in a sense, this would be a little bit like a public hearing. But anyone that wishes to comment regarding the northside annexation may do so. We just invite you to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments, try to address your questions. Somebody's got to go first.
Yeah, I guess I'm the lucky guy. Mark Hendrickson, and I represent Northern Improvement. And we see we're in the area that you're annexing, and we oppose the annexation the way it's currently drawn. We don't feel that coming as far north with you, with the annexation is basically what we oppose, is the area that you plan on developing, we don't have a problem with that, but we just don't think you should be coming out into basically already developed area.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from Mr. Hendrickson?
You know, I'd ask the question, why? Why are you opposed?
Well, the reason we're opposed to it is, you know, we basically got all the services out there in our community the way we need them. You know, we've got the water, we've got our sewer systems out there, we've got the, you know, Rural Fire Department services, the Sheriff's Department is out there and so forth. So basically, if you annex us in, we're not going to get any additional services from the city. I realize that, you know, possibly you guys can supply us with water, which is, to some extent, some of the same water that we already have. We already have southwest water out there, so you just take that over. And for the time that, you know, to get the sewer out there, pave streets, curb and gutter and that type of thing, you know, you've got a lot of development to do before you can even get those services out to us. We don't see where it's going to be, you know, anytime soon that you guys will get those other services out to us. So we just don't, you know, there's no plus side to it from us. We see our taxes would go up, but we'd have no benefits, we can see.
So, but it really does come down to the taxes?
Well, that's part of it. But, you know, why would somebody want to be annexed in when we're not going to get anything better than what we currently have? And like I say, you know, there's a pretty good area there that needs to be developed before we feel you should be looking at annexing, you know, basically from twos north in.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. Thank you for your time. My name is Bill Gion. I'm the Human Resource Manager out at Wyoming Casing Services. And I'm here on behalf of Steve Halverson, who couldn't be here this evening, but he asked me to come and speak. Wyoming Casing would request that the commission reestablish the north boundary of the annexation. We're not opposed to the progress that's being proposed south of us. You know, we understand the city's in a growth mode, just like we are in our business at Wyoming Casing. We just don't feel that it's needed at this time. You know, we are pretty self-sufficient out there, and we think that the dollars that you would use on our behalf could be better spent or reallocated to some other part of the city that might need that money more so than we do right now. And we understand that the city is growing and that, you know, we're in a proximity to the city where, you know, this could be revisited down the road, but we feel at this time it's not necessary to include us in the annexation. And then if you would take the time to... And then if you would take the time to reestablish the north boundary, I think you'd have very little opposition to what you want to do. Right now, it appears as if there's a pretty good pushback from not only ourselves, but the neighboring lot owners. And if you would push it the way it is, you know, I'm not saying it would or wouldn't, but if 25% of the landowners would, or the landmass would say no, then all the hard work you've done to get to this far would, you know, have to back up. And we're just coming here this evening saying, you know, maybe reconsider that north line, and you can, it can be a win-win situation. That's not a threat, it's just an observation.
And where would you place the north line?
South of us, you know. You know, I mean, I understand there's concerns to our neighbors to the south, but other than where it's at, I think there's two other logical places it could go. I don't know the street number right offhand, I think it's 40.
I don't know exactly where you're at, so when you say "south of you," I'm on the map here, I'm looking at the map.
You know, I didn't bring a city map with me, so I don't know. Sorry for that.
President Johnson, their offices are on the northeast, the far northeast corner of the, of this proposed area. Those two buildings that are on there are both theirs on that east boundary on the north side.
And we're in the process of building a third building there. I would say kind of, you know, like a quarter line south of where it is right now. I think Carson was whispering that it's 40th or 40?
40.
That's the street?
45th.
The writing's so small on here, I can't read the street.
I couldn't read it, so I wasn't sure. 43rd Street? No, we're located on 4490 Sims.
Are you sure of the road?
No, no, well, that'd be one possibility, or there's that road right, right north of Well-Pro there on the corner. That kind of gives you another access into our back lots there. Sorry, I'm not more specific, Mayor A.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm just, all we're really asking the commission is to maybe consider reestablishing that north boundary. And we don't want to be in the way of progress because we know that there's demand in the city to grow, and that's a good thing.
I'd have the same question for you. Is the bottom line really the issue of the taxes? The additional taxes?
Well, I think it's a definite consideration, but I, you have to understand there's a real independence in that community out there. You know, they went out there and established themselves many years ago, and they don't feel that the services are necessary right now, you know. And visiting with Mr. Halverson, you know, he just said, you know, I think they could allocate those funds somewhere else more proficiently than doing it in my backyard at this time. He didn't say anything about taxes at all. He didn't. But who wants their taxes to go up? I mean, it's a valid point, but I don't think it's the only reason I'm standing here.
I'm just trying to get to a point that we talk really openly about this.
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely a factor, Mr. Jackson, there's no question, but I honestly believe what we're trying to do is avoid the pushback and the resistance that'll come and make it kind of a win-win situation. And then who knows, maybe five years from now, we have to re-annex. You know, you're looking at a different situation, and at that time, it's kind of a moot point.
Appreciate your comments.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, and everybody else, I'm TJ Harrow. We got Cole out there. Just wanted to ask a few questions, just so I'm clear on everything. This proposal, is there, is this something that's, something that you obviously have to vote on? Is it, is it something you can amend?
Mr. Coleing?
Mr. President, the process that we've initiated is a process of annexation by resolution and by statute, by century code, that requires that, once that resolution is passed, that the city commission carry that to completion with a hearing as to whether there are 25% of the landowner volume that objects to the annexation. So that meeting will have to take place by statute, and you'll have to determine at that time whether or not 25% of the landowners have objected or not. If you would decide not to annex the property at that time because of the protests, you'd have to re-initiate the process in order to redefine the boundaries, and you'd have to pass another resolution calling for annexation of a different landmass at that time.
And we've already passed the resolution?
Correct.
So the answer to Mr. Harrow's question right now is, no, you couldn't amend it.
Correct.
You go through the entire process.
And then you could re-initiate the process and with a different legal description, but at this point, you'll have to carry that process through to completion.
Okay. Just, in terms of where we sit on this, there is a few other things that we determine that are issues for our business. You know, the taxes, obviously, you know, we want to be good corporate citizens, and that really is not an issue for us. However, if we get, just so I'm clear, if we do get annexed and the taxes start right away, services may not come for one year, two years, 10 years, you don't know. It comes up to our property, and then we're financially responsible to take it to our building. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, we were conversing. Your taxes actually don't start right away, they would start in February of 2012, your first doable.
And we may not get services until 2018. You never know. So there might be a lag there. But as far as, we do other things out there. We rent a little bit of space there for fireworks. You know, obviously, that'd be an issue, I think, if it was in the city. The financial responsibility to put in all the sewer and the water and so forth, we have two connections there. We have a holding or a pit that's been grandfathered in that is for drainage water. We see that as value because it's grandfathered in. So, you know, if you currently build a new building, I think you have to do a tank inside. You know, so we look at some of those things as value that we would lose in terms of doing it this way. And I'd just like to thank you for the time and the process that we come up here and talk about it. And yes, we want to be open and honest and let you know exactly what's going on and how we feel about it. And again, we just want to be good corporate citizens. I think everybody out in that area does, and we want to do what's right. And yet, we feel that south of twos, and I think that's, the city calls it 34, and the county calls it 40, is that right? That road, I think I would be in favor or certainly like to see the city and understand that development south of there is definitely needed, and it's something we should move forward on. But north of there, I think we, it isn't an pressing matter right now, and I would step up just for my own business and just say that if, at some point in time, it's necessary to annex north of there because of development or an industrial park or whatever that may be coming or something that happens, and it's right for the city, we would not oppose that, and we would certainly jump on that. Right now, we'd like to see you guys just go south of twos and do what you need to do and go from there. Is there any questions?
No questions, but I think one other thing we need to get out there is that, you know, this is a step-by-step thing if it happens, and when services do go up there, there's probably going to be more cost for the users of those services. In other words, whether it's special assessments or however that would happen, certainly the property owners in that area are going to be participating in that cost to some degree, I would expect. I don't think we have a plan for that right now, and I don't think we know that, but that's likely what would happen. And somebody correct me if I'm saying that wrong.
That's an issue.
And that's going to be a variable, because as you pointed out, by the time we get there, it could be a few years away. You could have different owners out there, you'll likely have some different commission members. The city will be in a different environment financially and economically, I mean, the whole economic landscape would be different. So it's hard to say what would take place. I mean, if it was right today, I think the city is in a position to help soften that cost, and I think you can make an argument why the city should do that. You know, I think probably the question that most of you are here for is, why is the city, why is the commission interested in doing this in the first place? I mean, you have a nice life out there, right? Things are going pretty good. Why is the city interested in doing this? And there are a variety of reasons, but I think some of the major reasons are that a developed area that's adjacent to the city, it really makes sense that that area, from a city perspective, be in the city, whether it's an area that's about to be developed or is already developed. And the reason is, the city doesn't want to get ringed in by these developments that are outside of the city standards. It physically prevents the city from growing, especially when they're not done to city standards. And when you look at Dickinson, I think it's pretty apparent that the city, if it does grow, if it continues to grow now, is likely to grow in a northern, generally a northerly direction, okay? When you look at the laws regarding annexation, if we annexed right up to where you've suggested, and that's to that 34th Street or just south of your property, if at a later time, the city is, still continues to grow north and actually starts to look like it's going to grow north of your little area because there's undeveloped land up there, we can't just arbitrarily annex you into the city. It would take 75% of you in that block to agree, even if the city is growing, say, around you. The only way we really can force you to annex is if we're annexing enough property that when you total it up, you have less than 25% of it. That opportunity isn't going to come up very often. Mr. Coleing, did I get there right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. But I mean, that's, that's, that's the deal. The city is growing to the north, and if we continue to have land develop around you, it doesn't make sense that that little piece of land, that piece of land, be outside the city.
I agree with you. If it continues to go north, and I stated earlier, then I'd be certainly in favor of that. It's frustrating that if you want to pull a parcel of land into the city in terms of annexation, as long as you just get the pool of land big enough, you can do it. When the 25% or the 23% that are against it, that's 95% of the people that don't want it. So it's frustrating from our perspective.
I understand that. And we have to not only look at things from your perspective, but the perspective really of the entire city. And I can, I can honestly say or see where you can argue that it's not in your, especially in your immediate best interest to come into the city. But I think we could argue that it's really, from the entire city perspective, it, all the citizens is probably, is in the best interest that you come into the city. I'll give you one other reason why we're looking at this, and that is, you know, the city has extraterritorial zoning authority, and I believe for a city of our size, it's one mile, two miles beyond, two miles beyond our boundaries. Well, we're seeing lots of development interest along Highway 22, and we already, because that really hasn't been controlled, it's already caused problems, and it's mainly access problems to the highway. And the further north our city limit goes, the more zoning authority and then the city has north along Highway 22, and the more disciplined we can be in how we develop there. We cannot develop safely there if each property tries to have access to 22. There needs to be a better plan. If it's within the two miles, the city has the engineering staff to help design a plan and develop a plan. So that would be another reason why we're looking at this, is it extends our extraterritorial authority a little further north on 22.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as far as access to 22, the state would regulate that. And I would be shocked if they allow any more access to 22. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, you're right, the state does. But, you know, the...
Well, you make a good point. The farther you go north, the more you can...
Yeah, and I think we can just see the natural growth of the city and those properties close to the city, the natural growth is to the north, especially from an oil, energy perspective. You know, your crystal ball's as good as ours, I mean, maybe we won't grow beyond where we're at today, and maybe our city will grow significantly beyond where it's at today.
Wow. We'd like to see, we'd like to see us right in the middle of the city someday.
Well, it could happen. But, you know, if the city had the authority just to say, "We're going to annex you," we could, we could take this a little bit at a time. But because of the development of North Industries, it really presents an opportunity for us to do just that, annex this area. Another reason, and I don't think this is as big or quite as big a reason as the previous two that I mentioned, but the city, when you look at the city right now as it's defined, it doesn't really have that much industrial land within the city limits. By doing this, this annexation, it really gives us the potential to have much more industrial land be available for the city at a future date. That's, so I mean, if I had to give you three reasons, which I guess we have to do, those would be the three reasons, but the first two are more the major reasons from my perspective, and I'd certainly invite my fellow commissioners to add their reasons or clarify anything that I've said.
I'd like to expand on one issue. And first of all, you know, I'm not afraid to admit that we don't have all the answers to these questions right now. We think this is the right thing to do, and I think the reasons Mr. Johnson just gave are good ones. But I think there's another one, and earlier this evening, we did final passage of our Revenue for that budget comes from a lot of different places, but certainly property taxes is a, is a big, big part of the revenue that builds that budget. When a community brings revenue in from property taxes, we have to bring revenue in from where we live, each of our homes, that property, but also where we work. I suspect most of the people in this area being annexed probably live in Dickinson. I don't know that, but I would guess most of the people live in Dickinson. Up till now, there's never been an ability to keep that balance of bringing the property tax revenue in, both from the homes and the businesses for those individuals that call Dickinson home. Now we have that opportunity, and it seems like it's a fairness issue, again, looking at the community as a whole, to spread that property tax to both, where the individuals who work there, where they live, and where they work. who work there, where they live, and where they work. I don't know that property tax revenue should be the main reason that we're annexing ground. I don't know that it is for me. It's certainly an important reason. But I really think there is a fairness issue that wasn't able to be addressed up until now. Now we can address it. So to me, that's a very important reason.
Well, I think further to that, too, is when we've met with the county commissioners and we've looked at the overall planning, the reoccurring theme is that they wish 20 and 30 years ago, somebody had sat down, mapped out a master plan, and held new subdivisions that were coming in to a higher standard, because they're now going back and cleaning up a lot of those issues. And the expense of that is falling back on the taxpayers. And this is our way to make sure that things get done right the first time to the right standard, so that as the community grows, that it's not coming back on the taxpayers at a later date. This is the most equitable way, I think, to ensure that as well.
What standards are different, Mr. Oldmans, that the county has versus the city as it relates to property?
Sure. Curb, gutter, streets, the whole way that the development goes forward. We came up, we had that issue with Lyons Acres, and that's one of the reasons that it had gotten tabled in the first place, is that we wanted to make sure that rather than just developing that to county standards, that it would be developed to city standards. And I think that's one of the things that we're trying to move forward with this as well.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Jay Wilhelm. I've got Dickinson Econo-Storage on the north end of town. I also have some exact property just like it in the city of Towns, or in the city of Dickinson. So I kind of come from a really good perspective. I can speak both county and I can speak city. Taxes, Mr. Jackson, is exactly the reason I bought the place. Most of the people, I have access to water out there. Most of the people have their own septic system out there. And the reason that you look at a place like that is, like I said exactly, I can tell you what taxes I pay in town. I don't have to pay for the water that runs off my building. In town, I have to pay for the water that runs off my building, which, incidentally, up by my storage units on the north end of town, there are no, I mean, there's curb, there's the rollover curb, but there is virtually no carryaway system underground. There's no, you know, like downtown, we have the little ports where the water runs into and it goes down to storm drains. That isn't up by my units up there. And most of it runs into the ground, so I pay taxes on that. I pay a higher tax on curb, gutter, street maintenance. And if you look at the street up by my north storage units, it's like this. And most of the water coming from the north properties runs all the way down onto my property, so I get nailed anyhow, even though I'm paying for curb and gutter and water to be taken away by the storm drains. But it doesn't happen. So from my point of view, I'd just as soon have that stay exactly the way it is if you want to annex the block, for the lack of a better term, the block south of Two's construction that, I forget what the name of it was, but that pretty good sized square there, and anything around it, that's fine. But that was one of the main reasons that I bought that place up there, is because it is county. And when you guys move in with sewer, gutter, everything else, the people that have their own wells, I would assume it's just like city, you can still maintain and use your own well, but you are not going to be able to, you're going to have to hook up to sewer, and you're going to have to remove your septic system, right?
I assume that's the way it works, yeah.
And I don't imagine the city is going to help with that expense.
Well, again, that, there'll be a different set of commissioners here when that happens. And I mean, we can't tell you one thing and then they do another. But I would hope that when that time comes, that they give some consideration to that and they have the resources that they can help with that. Because again, you know, from your perspective, I certainly understand your argument, because I'm not going to tell you it's a better deal for you. But for the greater good of the city of Dickinson, I think it is a better deal myself. But for you individually, it's probably not.
Okay. I think you're going to run into a good 25% that it's not going to be. At least if you go north of, you know, of that 34th Street, I believe it was, you're going to find quite a bit of opposition up there to it. So, thank you.
Hello? Bill Andrus. Used to be Andrus All-Season Storage, now it's All-Season Storage. And I want to do two thank yous. Talked to Sean Castle about a week and a half ago, and we had him come up to a group of people up there that are all in the same well. And he forwarded me to Sean P. over here, and so we got, and he did come up and gave a real nice presentation and answered all our questions that we had about water usage and so forth. But anyway, we have four lots up there. One on Highway 22, one behind Highway 22 off, and then two on the other side. We have three small storage buildings and eight larger storage units, consisting of about 215 storage units. And I guess we would probably say that wife and I are probably opposed at this point, unless something would change. But we don't need sewer, we don't need water. You know, definitely, I want the city to grow, and everybody does. And so we'd probably go on record of not being in favor of the acquisition, the way the boundary lines are at this point. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrus.
Okay, thank you.
I am definitely not a public speaker, so if I appear nervous, I am, I can run my store just fine, but I don't like being on TV or radio or anything like that. Greg and I run Andrus Outdoors. We've been pretty successful up there. Right now, if you were to annex me to the city of Dickinson right now, we would be totally for it. We have bait tanks that run 24 hours a day, that we have to supply fresh water to our bait. Right now, we need to put in a drainage field to control our water up there. That's been a problem for a number of years. We are going to be getting this done in the next few weeks here. The cost to us is going to be $7,000 to put this drainage field in. It is going to be several years before you guys get up there to give us actual curb, gutter, water. And then you come up and you want to rip out my septic system, my drainage system, somebody best be paying me, or I'm going to be taking the city of Dickinson to court when you come on my property to rip my things out that I pay for. Also, I would like to state about your city water, we don't need your city water. Anybody that knows anything about bait, your chlorine in your city water and your treatments that you use in your city water are going to kill all of my bait within three minutes' time. Who's going to be paying for all my bait that I'm losing? A lot of you guys hunt, a lot of you guys fish, where are you going to be getting bait if I can't supply it and if I can't have my fresh water? Also, I would like to say, if we're annexed to the city, at the last meeting you told us, we would have to follow city ordinances. Well, currently in the summer, on Sunday, we are open from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That is when our business, over the years, has, most of the customers come in at that time. Most of the customers at that hour are going to the lake and they're looking to buy bait. Now, if I have to follow city ordinances, I can only be open from noon to 5:00 on Sunday. I'm going to lose a lot of customers up there for that. And also, I would like to state that this tax thing, you know, you guys keep talking that it's additional tax to us. Yeah, I don't like the additional tax thing, you know, at all. Plus, a lot of our customers, it's been a selling point for many years. And Bill Andrus that was just up here, he can testify to that point, too, that being out of the city limits, you know, that sales tax has been, has done wonders for the business. We got people coming from Bismarck, Glendive, we got people coming from all over and supporting our store because of us being out of city limits. And I guess that's all I have to say. I don't need your sewer, I don't, definitely don't need your water. And I'm all for city growth, too. But if and when the time comes and it's right that we need to be annexed, I can maybe see that. But at the last meeting, they were stating it could be eight, 10, even 20 years before this subdivision south of us is developed and we get sewer and water. But until then, we should all pay for it? I don't think that's right. Besides that, I don't need your services. And that's all I have to say. That's from our perspective at a sporting goods store. And I think the city would hate to lose a sporting goods store, too, and they all have to go to Shields or something like that in Bismarck to, you know, might not be too great for the city of Dickinson. So I think that maybe you guys should reconsider where your boundaries are at before you're putting people in your annexation that don't need to be until maybe eight, 10, or 20 years from now, that you can't give us an answer for. I guess that's all I have to say. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. I have a question for the city engineer. I assume you're using well water right now for your bait?
We are. We have a public well up there, yes, and we have our own septic systems. But we currently do not have a drainage system for our bait water that's been running for, it needs to run through there 24 hours to keep that water fresh for our bait. We currently have been running it out of the store on top of the ground with a garden hose out of our bait tanks.
Okay. I'm going to ask the city engineer a question regarding annexation. It'd be my understanding that if you're annexed into the city, you can still have a well. You don't lose your well. I mean, the mere fact of annexing to the city, even if we had city water up there immediately, wouldn't require them to use city water for their bait tank.
No, not for the bait tank. I think our ordinance does state potable water for the facilities would be required to hook up, but you could still have a well, and we have wells drilled in town.
Yeah, I have a well on my property, you know, that I use to water my lot.
Nothing would require them to get rid of the well.
So you don't have, I mean, you don't have to use the city water for your bait. And then I have a question for the city engineer. Do our ordinances require that a business like Andrus cannot open on Sunday till, what time did you say, 10 o'clock or 12 o'clock?
The city on Sunday is 12 to 5:00. And at the last meeting, we were told we would have to follow them ordinances.
Well, you'd have to follow city ordinance if you're in the city.
Right.
But I mean, I just want to clarify with city attorney that that's correct.
Mr. President, the Sunday opening laws are a creature of state law. They're not a creature of city ordinances, and we don't have a city ordinance that addresses Sunday opening.
So the fact that that business, if it were in the city, they could be open anytime they want on Sunday?
The same Sunday opening laws would apply to that business, whether they are inside city limits or outside of city limits.
So there is no city law regarding that issue? So, but I mean, I assume you're operating within state law right now. I don't see why state law would limit you there.
I don't know. I just think if you guys are allowed to pass and do certain things, that you'll be forcing us to do other things, too, down the road. Also, at this meeting, we talked to Meyer Industries, which was left out of your zoning map. And it was left out purely for blackmail, because without them, you only got 23%. And you can pass your annexation anyway. Is there a reason for them being left out?
Where is Meyer's Industry?
Meyer Industries is straight to the east of our business, south and east of our business. Come on, guys, isn't it true? Yeah, they left Meyer Industries out, so there's only 23%.
Mr. Soren, can you tell where is Meyer's Industry?
I'm not sure where Meyer's Industry is. On the plat, you know, what we, it was the replat of Berwick's subdivision and the Lane subdivision were all included north of 34th. We took those whole developments subdivisions. That's where the boundaries were drawn around those. I'm not sure where Meyer's Industry is.
Meyer Industries is where you go from that hotshot company that's there on the corner, and you go straight to the east and you'll run right into Meyer Industries. So it's right smack in the middle of your annexation.
Would that be the property that Henry Brown owns?
I'm not sure who owns it.
That's included. There was a map that didn't have it in, because when we met with Mr. Brown up there, he owns the house to the east yet, and there was some discussion about him possibly wanting all of that to come in.
Where are we at? We're up here.
Right there.
Okay, and then this is here. It would be, this is hotshot right here. They are straight back and...
Include it inside of it.
Okay, they told us that they weren't in there.
But they're in there?
And you guys visited them and they were not in there. But okay, if they're there.
They are in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that answers that. I'm sorry.
President Johnson, they, we did exclude them at one point, because the same owner owns the house to the east. And when we met with him, he expressed the potential of maybe even bringing his house in as well. And so we were looking at that whole parcel there, which includes the house, his business, and the lot in between. Since then, when we developed this, we decided it was simpler just to deal with the Lane subdivision, the Berwick's, replat of Berwick's subdivision as a whole from a legal perspective, instead of bringing in that residential property as well.
Okay. Okay, I guess it was unclear, because we talked to a representative from Meyer Industries today that said that they were not in it. And that's why they are not attending the meeting, I believe, tonight, because they were told they weren't in it.
Well, we'll make it clear to them that they are in there, so they have an opportunity to express themselves, too.
Okay. Okay. Because without them, we, we have no fighting chance because it goes by, it goes by land, not just the people.
Right. Yeah, it's landmass.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for me?
Anything else?
Any questions for me? Any other?
I think we had a good discussion with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just very briefly, a point of clarification. Mr. Coleen, you were saying that the way it is presently, it, it cannot be amended? So, it has to go through due process?
That's correct. The Central Code requires that the commission hold a hearing on the resolution that was passed.
Well, I apologize for our ignorance then in requesting that you amend it, but I just wanted to make sure. So, then, the letter that we received, there will be another hearing back here on the 18th? Is that correct?
That's correct. The hearing for the commission to determine any written protests to the annexation will be held on the 18th.
And I think we have a deadline to put in writing by the 12th?
That's correct.
In any, in favor or opposition or whatever? With regards to that, in that letter, do we have to identify what property we own in that annexation?
Yes, you do. The, the written protest is what the city will use to determine whether or not 25 percent of the area, of the landowners of the area have objected to the annexation.
Okay, so if we just give you a legal description, you guys will calculate it from there? Right? Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
I guess I'd have one more comment, too. You're talking that you wanted to control the zoning going out north, so if you annexed this in, you could control the zoning further out in the city. You know, one problem you have with that, that theory is most of your businesses are building out to the north and outside of the city are doing it for a reason, was because they wanna be outside of the city. So, if you guys keep, you know, driving that boundary line to the north, you're gonna keep driving businesses further out north on 22. So, I, I think when you, when you look at where you're gonna draw that line, I think you guys should be able to provide the services in a timely manner before you start annexing, you know, too far out that you don't really see you can be developing properties.
I wanna be clear on that point. When we talked about the two-mile extraterritorial zoning rights, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we want, that we have plans to annex that far out. I mean, I, it would take some other significant development now right in this area, I think, for the, the city to be looking at more annexation. But what it does do, it, again, it, it gives the city the authority to control the zoning a little further down Highway 22 where there clearly is pressure for development.
You know, but like I say, at the same time, that's the reason people are, are building businesses out to the north outside of the...
So, they, so they can get away from city zoning?
Because they wanna be far enough away from the city so they don't have to deal with, you know, some of the, not just city zoning, but some of the cluster of the city. I mean, you know, you take our business, you know, that's one of the reasons we're up in the north end of town there, is because we have big equipment, we have big trucks, and you just aren't gonna be able to get around the city of Dickinson. So, you, you know, so you've got a reason that you wanna be out there so you don't have to worry about every time you pull into your property with a piece of, with a truck and a piece of equipment, but you have to worry about that you're gonna be hitting somebody. I mean, you wanna be out in more of a rural area, so, you know, because your business kinda is generated for a rural area, you know, these tight quarters and equipment, you know, it's, it's just really tough to get around. Even when we come into town, you know, we do work, we like working in the city of Dickinson.
We understand that, and again, we're not, we're not necessarily saying that the city of Dickinson, you know, in a handful of years is gonna be two miles further down the road than that. But we do think it's in the city's best interest, and even in the county's best interest, that we have more of a zoning influence further north.
And, and, you know, I could understand where, you know, you do have to have some control, some of the zoning out in certain spots, but what I'm saying is, you know, if you go further north than what you really think you wanna control, you're just driving businesses further north.
As far as the congestion coming to you, though, I think you're making our point for us. That's just the point. The city is growing out toward you, and the congestion will come. And that's why 20 or 25 years ago, when that area was developed, it was probably appropriate that it wasn't in the city. Now, things have changed. So, I think you're making the exact point that we're trying to make.
But at the same time, if you're not gonna provide a city, the services that the city should be providing for, for residents of the city, you shouldn't be looking at annexing them in either.
Yeah, and I don't think it's just about the services, and, you know, we don't know when that may or may not happen.
But just to be clear, I mean, if you're in that city extraterritorial zoning area, that two miles outside the city limits, the city is, is not providing normal city services to that. It's just controlling the zoning and, and the standards that you're gonna build to in that area, in that two-mile radius.
Yeah, but at the same time, you've gotta understand that people, people are building north right now outside of the city limits. That's the reason they're building it, is because their, their businesses are more conducive of being outside the city.
Well, and, and, and it's appropriate that they be there, but we'd like to see them build in a, in a more regulated manner. Otherwise, we're, we're just, we're left with what happens when it isn't really regulated. And we'll, we'll have to deal with the aftermath of that years later. I can point to a good example on the south side of town. You know, with the, the south side trailer court area. That was developed in the last oil boom outside of city standards, and the city is not responsible for the streets down there, the maintenance of them. We're not responsible for the water and sewer. But I tell you, someday, some city commission is gonna say, we can no longer let that look the way it looks, and the city is gonna step in and take care of it, and the taxpayers are gonna pay for that when they really shouldn't have to. And if we don't have better controls on how we develop north, someday, we're gonna be left with that, too. It won't, it won't be this group here, and we'll probably be dead and gone, but some other citizens are gonna have to deal with that. And, and that's, that's really the issue. Right now, we have quite a bit of uncontrolled development taking further north, and all you have to do is move two miles from the city limits, and, and we can't say a thing about it. It's, it's left to the county. And the county, they're gonna do their best, but they don't have the staff that the city has. That's why cities, one of the reasons cities get involved is that they have the professional staff to deal with it. You know, we're not saying you shouldn't be there, but we're saying there should be a good plan and, and, and good standards to how this development is done.
Okay. I see.
That's, that's our point.
We've expressed our opinions, so.
You have, and I mean, and it's supposed to be a discussion. You, you, you wanna hear our opinion, too, and see, said, you know, I can see, if we just look at, at the area that you're confined in, you have, I think, a better deal just to be by yourself. And if that's all we were looking at, and we weren't looking at potential for the city growing even further north as time goes on, you know, I'd, I'd agree with you. But I think we're looking at, there's, there's a strong possibility that the city's going to grow beyond this area that we're talking about in a reasonable period of time.
But, you know, that's all we're seeing, though, too.
Right.
Is, if you had developed some of this area to the south of us, and then if it's five years or whatever, you come back and say, you know, I think it's time we annexed you into it.
If, if we could arbit...
We'd be a lot more receptive to it.
See, that's the point. We can't arbitrarily do that. If, if we came to that same block and said, okay, it's five years down the road or eight years down the road, it's now time. It only takes 25 percent of you to say, no, we're not coming in, and you don't have to come in. But, see, that's the point.
So, you're, so in other words, that's why you're doing it this way, is so you can try and prevent 25 percent of not letting you come in, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Can I answer that question?
I mean, I, I thought I said that earlier, but I'll, you know, we'll say it again. That's, that's what we're looking at. Because if the law was...
So, you're just trying to do it so the majority of the people that are working up in that area don't have a choice of what's gonna happen?
Well, I, I think we need to say that a different way, and it's already been said. And the way we say it, Mr. Hendrickson, the way we say it is that we're looking out for the good of the entire community. We realize you may not agree with this particular action, but we're looking out for the good of the entire community.
But, but you still could be doing, doing the same thing if you were doing it the increments. As you get it developed and you bring it out, you could bring us in and then.
If, if the law would allow us to do it...
To bring us in without realistically giving us any services, you know, doesn't really make a lot of sense.
If, if, well, I think it does, but if, if the state would allow us to do it differently, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But the state doesn't allow us to do it that way.
But you do have the right to do it differently. You guys could rezone that and, and cut it off where that development's at and bring it in. Next trip around, you can look at bringing us in.
So, Mr. Coleen, would you explain the process one more time here?
Mr. President, in the event that this area is not annexed in at this time, if the city five or eight years or however long down the road wanted to annex that property in, then 20, if, if 25 percent of the landowners up in that area objected to the annexation, it would prevent the annexation from ever occurring. Even if we had 74 percent of the landowners up there agreed to annexation, a minority of 24 percent or 25 percent could prevent the annexation from ever occurring, even if it may be in the best interest of the city and even though 74 percent of the landowners up there may wish annexation to occur.
In terms of landmass, yes.
But then, at the same time, five years down the road, you could rezone your map again the way you wanted to to accomplish what you want again, just like you're trying to do this time.
You, you, we can zone, but that area, in effect, the city could possibly grow around it, and you would have city around it, and you would have this area inside that isn't annexed unless some future commission found the same opportunity that's here today where you're taking in a larger landmass, and then you would...
Yeah, and that's all, that could easily be done. It's all how you draw the, draw the line.
Well, I don't know that it can be easily done. This is, this is the first major annexation the city has looked at in many, many years. It's, I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's an easy thing.
But obviously, there's, there's a question on how you're doing it to start with because you changed it several times.
We didn't change it after we passed the resolution.
You know, I mean, we, we saw more than one draft of it before the final came out, let's put it that way. So, I mean, you guys, I, I believe you guys could do it in another manner at a later date if you wanted to. It's just a matter of whether the city wants to or not.
Well, I guess we, I disagree myself, but...
Mr. President, a couple of things that keep coming up here is, is they're talking about us collecting the taxes without the services and so on. I know currently, we do have tax abatement hearing every year, to which some people come and say, I'm not getting, I don't have curb and gutter, I don't have this and that. And we have worked with the property owners on some sort of tax abatement. Would they not be eligible for the same consideration if they don't have curb sewer water up there? They aren't gonna be taxed the same as a property owner with curb sewer water at that time. Is that correct?
Mr. Stanner, that's a possibility. I haven't looked at the tax abatement proceeding specific to how that would affect these properties. I'd have to take a look at that before I can answer.
But, but do you agree that we have done that with some of the current city property? I mean, just recently, while the last abatement hearing? I think we have changed taxes based on some services they did or did not get, or street improvements, or so on?
I don't specifically recall that at the moment. The, the tax abatement hearings depend upon the value of the property as the city assessor determines that, and there would have to be evaluation calculation done.
And, and her decision, or her decision, her, her advice was that we could adjust the taxes because of certain conditions with, with the property?
No, we didn't adjust the taxes. We adjusted the valuation.
Valuation, okay.
If, for example, if the city assessor said this property's worth $100,000, and the owner came in and said, I, I think my property's misvalued because of these particular conditions, and then if we agreed with the owner, you probably lowered the value to, say, $85,000 or something like that. And that, the lower valuation impacts, of course, taxes, but just to, just to abate them, that's a difference.
But, and, and again, obviously, their property would be worth less without the water sewer and so on.
Yes.
Compared to someone with, and so...
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for your comments.
I'm Greg, and I'm part of Andrus Outdoors, and, and, you know, I've been talking to a lot of people up there. Everybody's against it, but there's some questions I have for you guys. I've talked to some guys from the rural fire department. They're telling me they might, may be losing a rescue unit because of this. They don't know where they're gonna get their funding. I don't know if any of you guys checked into that. If the city police take over our policing up there, they're short-staffed right now. I've talked to them, too. They're totally against it, too. Have you checked into the police or fire department? I'm kinda wanting to know that, because they're both against it.
We have the chief of police and the fire chief right here, and we'll invite them to the podium, and they can state their views.
President Johnson, commissioners, the annexation is something that we have visited with, with the Dickinson Rural Fire Department. City Administrator Kessel and myself have been part of those discussions. When the city looks at an annexation like this, two city services that the annexed property immediately does receive before any other infrastructure is the police department and the fire department. And without the infrastructure to support our response, we are currently meeting with the Dickinson Rural Fire Department and looking at ways that we could come to an agreement with them that would support that response. The dollar amount that they would lose by this annexation has been shared with us, with the city administrator Kessel is aware of that, and that is part of the conversations that we're having with them.
The, their estimate of revenue lost is $4,400. I, I don't know what it takes to run a rescue unit, but my assumption is it's a lot more than that. We have talked to them about actually reviewing all of the services that they provide, and maybe the, there's a way that the city fire department could provide those services as well, and therefore lowering their expenses and their burdens. So, all of this is on the table at this time, and we continue those discussions. There's not been a, a, a final decision yet, but I believe that in the end, the city commission would make the right decision and possibly fund that $4,400 until development occurs that supports a fire response from our city crews that would be more than adequate.
I believe that the unit that they're referring to is a new pumper truck that the Dickinson Rural Fire Department, if, if I'm not mistaken, already has ordered. They are on a very limited, very strict budget, and the dollar amount of impact that this annexation could take away from the mills they currently receive would truly negatively affect that purchase. It is something like Mr. Soren, or Mr. Kessel has stated, we are, we are coming to the table with them, and we are talking about that, as well as what we would need from them to support our response to that area until infrastructure would support our response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Rommel? Chief Romo?
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. We've had a little bit of discussion about this annexation within the department. Of course, with the added responsibility of the land and the businesses that are up there, it was certainly put a burden, a burden on us, because we are 24/7, unlike the sheriff's department, we do 24/7. That's where they, you know, that's where those that are outside city limits would benefit from being annexed into the city, and of course, we'd have to take that responsibility.
When you say unlike sheriff's department, isn't the sheriff's department 24/7?
No, no, they're not. They are not 24 hours, they're seven days a week, I should say, but they're not 24. No, they shut down sometime during the evening, it varies.
What happens if there's a 911 call right today up there when the sheriff's department's shut down? Who responds?
Right, there is an on-call deputy that they will call out then. Now, you know, when it comes to the Anderson Outdoor, there have been times when an alarm has went off, and we have responded to that until the sheriff's office, if we are available. So we have, you know, assisted in a thing like that, in a situation like that. But we are, you know, we are seeing a growth within the city, tremendous growth, and we are seeing that there's quite an influx of people. I can tell you, I can tell you now, you know, where before I have said in the past, we haven't had as many calls, or calls for service hasn't, we haven't seen an increase, but I can tell you now, we are starting, we are beginning to see it. And so, you know, of course, this commission has been very good to the police department, and so when we would come and say we need more resources, I'm sure you would listen. And so, to say that we as a police department are against this annexation is not correct and true.
Is not correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Any other discussion here?
Just out of curiosity, excuse me again, but so I know, where do the letters of opposition go, and how do they get addressed?
Okay, Mr. Cohen, you want to go through that again?
Sure, written letters protest can be addressed to Mr. Kessel, city administrator, and sent to city hall, and city hall will record them and determine the area of protest.
Do they have to give a legal description, or can they just give an address and we figure it out from there?
I think it would help if you have a legal description. I think Mr. Soren's office is going to have to be the one that will compile that, compile those legal descriptions and determine what the area is that the protest represents, but if you have a legal description, I'm sure that would help.
Everybody's got that on their taxes, no sense in making extra work.
Okay, I guess that's true. Anybody else? Well, we'll continue on with the rest of our meeting then. I thank everybody for participating and listening to us also. So we're back at public safety, and we'll hear the police department's report. Do you have a report, or should we just go to that ordinance? Okay, so what we have there is an ordinance that was presented last meeting as a report by Captain Dossinger, and it's kind of a shortcut ordinance, I guess, is that how we'd describe it? Maybe, Captain, we could have you come up, you gave a good introduction of it last time, and just have you introduce it again. It's a short ordinance, and tell us why you think this is necessary.
Good evening, commission, Mr. President. Basically, this ordinance gives us another tool in our toolbox to make sure that we provide, you know, a more smoother flow of traffic in certain areas of town, and also make sure that we provide an area, a tool to provide an extra sense of pedestrian safety in certain parking lots, certain areas of town such as Third Avenue West and Bellard. Third Avenue West and 12th Street, where traffic will also cut through the T-Rex shopping mall to avoid that traffic control device. Another area of town is State's Avenue and Fairway, where we see traffic avoiding that stop sign and cutting through the parking lot of the credit union in that area. So basically, this ordinance gives us another tool in our toolbox to provide a better area of safety.
Okay. Thank you, that's good, much better introduction I could give. So are there comments or questions here by city commissioners? This would be ordinance 1393, and is there a motion regarding, well, let me ask first if there's anybody from the public that wants to comment on this ordinance. If so, you can come up and join Captain Dossinger here at the podium. There's no one from the public that wants to comment. Any comments, questions by city commission? Is there a motion regarding this item? Regarding first reading?
I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 1393.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing, and we'll vote, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Any, as long as you're up here, do you have any comments about how things are going with the police department, or does anybody have questions for Captain Dossinger?
I have one question, Mr. President. What's the status of our weight, our weight limits, or the enforcement of weight limits?
We are still moving forward with that. We actually had an opportunity to send one of our officers with the North Dakota Highway Patrol recently for some, for a ride-along and some training, to see if he'd be willing to, something he'd be interested in doing for us, and also kind of a, he brought back some information towards us, to see if that's something we're going to be able to do in the future. So we are still moving forward with that. I did meet with Aaron Prouse at the Baylor Building, discuss how that would work with their scales, we were kind of developing a plan for that, so we are still moving forward with that.
Do we have a timeframe?
I would say maybe sometime in November, the time we get the logistics worked out.
Okay, this for the police department, as well as for the engineering department, we're starting to see, or I'm starting to see, a large amount of pulverization of our residential streets up there because of the traffic, the overweight traffic and construction, and I'm a little concerned that we can't let it go too much longer without, you know, some type of enforcement or some type of direction to the contractors up there.
Yeah, I agree with you, it's just a matter of, weighing trucks is something new for our police department, you know, that's something that's usually been done by the highway patrol or the Stark County Sheriff's Department, so this is a new issue brought forward to us, and it's kind of a, we have a little bit of a learning curve with, to make sure we want to do it the right way. And I think, believe Mr. Cohen is also drafting an ordinance pertaining to that.
Yes, we do have an ordinance under draft, and I would expect that you'll see first reading of that at your October 18 meeting.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to tab six, Public Works Engineering. Mr. Soren, anything you'd like to call to our attention?
Yes, President Johnson, just a couple of items. I guess, number one, in the board of adjustments, I'd just point out that, you know, we're seeing some fairly large accessory structures again, and it's been brought up at that meeting that we need to work on, on that, particularly sidewall heights and things of that nature where we're getting into residential areas. So that board is taking that task and going to look at that and try and present something to planning and zoning for maybe a revision in our zoning ordinance to limit, you know, garages and the heights that they'll be allowed in a residential district particularly. So that's something that's on the table, that's been brought up. Planning and zoning, you know, we're still in the process of working on a couple, three subdivisions yet from earlier this year, trying to get those wrapped up before winter. And then the energy committee meetings that minutes are here from the oil well that we talked about earlier tonight, but if there's any questions, I'd certainly be happy to try and answer those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. We'll move to tab eight, and then city administrators' report. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson, commissioners, there's one item officially on your agenda, it's a thank you, pretty self-explanatory. There is one additional item that I'd like to draw to your attention. The North Dakota League of Cities met this past week, and they made several awards. One of those awards that they made was for Elected Official of the Year, and President Johnson was awarded that, that award at the Saturday evening meal. So I just wanted to say congratulations, President Johnson, on your recent award from the North Dakota League Cities.
Thank you. Anything else?
Since we're talking about awards, I'll mention two others.
Okay.
I previously mentioned to this board that the city of Dickinson received the Friend of Transit Award that is given annually. I did travel to Rapid City, received that award on your behalf, the citizens, and of course, the city commission. At that same event, the elder care organization was also awarded the Innovator of the Year Award for all of the things that they are doing. So they also got Driver of the Year. So the city of Dickinson and/or entities represented inside did very well at the Transit Awards this year. So with that, that would conclude my report, unless there's questions.
Any questions for the city administrator? Not, we'll move to tab nine, Accounts Payable and Payroll. Are there any of the accounts payable you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the payables and payroll?
So move.
Second. With a motion and a second, there was no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Any comments by city commissioners? Not, we'll go to public issues. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the city? If so, step to the podium, state your name. There's no one from the public, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there a second?